I'll be home for Christmas in about one hour.
Eric.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the eighteenth meeting of the board's eighteenth of December's meeting of board supervisors. For those who don't know, this is the last meeting for us of the year, and I would like to do one, two, three, four, five. We have five visitors with us this evening, and welcome to all you out in the streaming world. For that, I would ask Lex to lead us in which allegiance tonight, please.
I'm electing allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
If everybody would remain standing for a moment of silence for the brave men and women that protect this great nation, let us think of them over the holidays. There are numerous organizations that have little care packages that they ask for donation that they send to the troops around Christmas and New Year's. You can check online on that, but I would ask the people at least keep our troops, brave men and women, and their thoughts over the Christmas and New Year holiday. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to a festive evening here tonight. We've got a hat.
A conspiracy.
And with a hat. Recording the chairman's report tonight, that's number five on the agenda. There's a couple of things. One, we met in executive session tonight, we're going to put this to note matter. This is important to those that are here as well as those that are listening. On January twenty-second, at seven o'clock at East High School, we will have a meeting on the issue of the properties with twenty acres of more.
Speaker of the House, say your name, please.
And there's been a letter sent out to, I believe, everybody over within a thousand feet of those four properties. We moved to the high school for a simple matter that we probably have outgrown the seating capacity of this room. So it will be on the twenty-second of January two thousand nineteen, seven o'clock at East High School. There will be an additional lead collection on Saturday, December twenty-second, which is this Saturday, for those that need that service provided. And we have two resignations from our first East Ocean, which is a separate organization for most of the great culturalists money for some of our programs here, particularly the adjacent stuff. Graycall and House Uber have announced their resignations, and we'll have to hopefully comply somebody else to fill their spots. Is there anybody in the room here that's here to talk about a matter that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none is a beautiful thing. That takes care of that. We do have.
Marty. Yeah, I think Marty had something, I'm sorry.
Come on up, Marty. You gotta come up. I go through the same routine.
Name and address for the streaming place and minutes.
Bernie Greenberg, eight ninety-four Jefferson Way.
Could you speak up to the person?
Eight ninety-four Jefferson Way?
There you go.
Okay. I'd like to discuss a bit about the Mary East Two Pro pipeline project, which has been held back because we've been discussing it now quite long. There's still some unresolved questions I have that I'd like to address to the board. Going back to the problem with the safety valves, we still haven't really reached any conclusion about that. To refresh your memory, Sonoco was supposed to put a safety valve at their station west of Boot Road, west of two oh two on Boot Road, correct? Yes, anyway. Then they decided to move it east of Boot Road, and West Ocean Township sued them in front of the PUC. And then subsequently, Sonoco said they didn't need one. So I'm asking, is that right?
No.
Is it right not to have that, a safety valve in between the two, one that are ready placed? Now, I know Rick had mentioned to me that they still fit in with the four miles from any residence, but that was for natural gas pipelines, and I'm wondering for a pipeline carrying natural gas liquids, whether that's adequate?
Dr. Greenberg, that item issue is on the Pipeline Test Force Agenda for Thursday night.
Oh, good.
They will review that and be raking a recommendation to the supervisors on that issue.
Good, well, maybe this is another item for the Pipeline Test Force. Is it safe to have pipelines sitting out in all types of weather for several years? Doctor Steinbrenner had mentioned that these pipelines are coated with toxic chemicals and that they can lead you into the drinking water.
I'll raise that issue at the Pipeline Test Force meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernie. The coatings that are on those pipes are susceptible to ultraviolet light, to rain, so they do break down over time. So we're trying to find out what Sonoco's plan is as far as storage or removal or protect protection of the pipelines like you're concerned on that issue.
I just want to say real fast, in order to make sure everybody knows this, we've all seen the pipelines in front of Loiteria, in front of the Executive Center, they've been there, they have, they've had things put in the ends so the animals will stay out, not live in there. David has raised this issue, you've raised the issue, others have raised the same issue with how can these survive and then be put in the ground and have be adequate? I don't know the answer to that. We don't know when they're going to start, but we're going to have to ask that question before they start to make sure that we are insured that they can use those places, that's the place they plan to pull in East Ocean. I don't know if they're going to change it or not. So far, Energy Transfer Partners in Texas has full control over what the folks do up here, for those that don't know that. They have not allowed them to either move them or put them in the ground. They're just sitting there doing their thing, and whether or not that has affected them in any way, shape, or form, we don't know at this time, but we will have to find out before it started. The other thing we don't know, or I don't know, at least what the cable does, they have never asked yet for twenty-four-seven operation, which I understand for the larger pipelines take more time, that they would like to do that. Now, they're well aware from the conversations in the beginning that they should have asked in the first place. They didn't. And we said that we have committed to the residents of East Ocean that there would be a meeting if they ever asked for a twenty-four-seven operation, and that meeting would have to be held at under the high school where we get, because it would be a large number of people in the audience. They're well aware of that. I have no idea if that has any influence at all over what's not going on now. All I know is they committed it to be done by December of two thousand twenty, which seems to me that they would need to start in the spring of this year if they're going to get both of those pipes in the ground, done and finished by that timeframe. I don't know that, but if that's what they're planning to do, sooner or later, we're going to find out that the drilling rigs are coming back, and once that happens, we're going to point out about the pipe. And I think that's a legitimate question, and it's a legitimate concern. And the Pipeline Task Force will no doubt take this thing seriously and do what they have to do, recommend to us a course of action or what we think we should consider doing, and we will certainly do that. So, in what probability, we don't have to accept their recommendations, but we probably would in most cases. So that's probably how we're going to handle that. David has been talking about this for a period of time, and no one really knows, Marty, to answer your question, yet. We will find out, because it's a very critical, it's a critical question. With that, we'll move on to the next item, that ends the public commentary. We have the emergency services report that Cormen gives once a month after Chief Renat comes up to the podium and lets everybody know, and she's, she's precious, she's dressed in sus-sabillion, how about that? No uniform tonight, chief, what is going on?
She's going Christmas shopping, let her go.
Oh, she's going Christmas shopping.
I wish. Good evening, everyone. There's two things I'd like to bring to everybody's attention. The first one is the red flag bandits. If you follow us, the crime watch, you're aware of this, but particularly at this time of year, what happens is when you put the red flag up on your mailbox, individuals know that there's something outgoing there, and they help themselves to it. If you're lucky, it's only cash or gift cards. Unfortunately, they have now also targeted East Ocean particularly for checks. They take your check, they either wash it, or they take your routing number and your account number and forge fraudulent checks, and then you are bouncing checks all over the place. Unfortunately, there's really not too much that we can do about it. We're recommending that during November and December moving forward, that residents use a official mailbox to try and protect themselves. We originally thought it was a scam involving the mail, actual post office box, but it turned out that it wasn't. It's individuals that are driving through their credits, and they've been dubbed the red flag bandits that started in Maryland.
Is this universal across the township or specific areas? And if it's specific areas, you understand, I understand.
There are certain areas that are being targeted, but there's nothing unique about that neighborhood, and if we say only these people should focus on it, we're concerned that other people might not be aware of it, and if these individuals drive through that mail route and they realize that nobody has the red flag up, they're going to go elsewhere. So we're trying to get the word out to everybody. And also, the problem is this started in Maryland, and it's now worked its way out. This is like the felon, the land gang, that we're having problems with every year, year after year. It is a national crime organization that just travels until they find a good target, and then they say, and then they move on. So unfortunately, unless you have a guard on your mailbox, there's really no way to protect yourself. And that's what's so frustrating about this particular crime threat, is that we don't know where they're going to head, and we can't stop it. All we can do is try to advise residents to protect themselves. The best way to protect yourself is to actually use an official mailbox rather than your residential mailbox.
That's a good tip.
And the second thing is, to give you an update, it will probably be hitting the news either tonight or tomorrow. This morning, at the Wellington facility, we were dispatched for an assault in which an individual went into the room of a family member and assaulted the individual by strangulation. The individual has been charged with attempted homicide and other related crimes. We appreciate the assistance we have from West Ocean Police Department, the District Attorney's Office, and from the administration in Wellington who worked with us to ensure that the residents were safe and informed. Any questions? Is the victim okay? The victim is okay.
Okay. Question. Hi, my name is Rod Coco, I live at six thirty-three North Spink Lane. Just a general question, Bellingham, there's an individual there, his name is Joe, I don't know if you've heard of him, and unfortunately, on probably at least that I'm aware, for poor occasions, he walks out of the facility, and he walks over to East Ocean Elementary. And just a couple months ago, my wife, when I were driving, and my wife retired, she used to teach there, and she said, there's Joe. And so we went and we got him and brought him back to the facility, and we actually had a meeting with the director, and the director said basically that there's nothing they can do about it. What concerns us, the last big incident, it was at night, he has no identification, he gets very confused, and he was walking on three fifty-two at night, you know, because there was no sidewalk. Unfortunately, we saw him, we picked him up, and we brought him back. Is there anything, the police are, is there anything we can do to, you know, protect, you know, people like that? I guess according to Bellingham, if the immediate family members don't do anything about it, they say there's nothing they can do to prevent him. I bet he's gotten out at least where we're aware of four or five times.
About anything I could recommend is if the Department of Aging gets involved and they do an independent evaluation to determine that the individual has dementia to the degree that they're incapable of being in an open living setting, then they can move to put them in a dementia ward. What's so tricky about dementia is it's a spectrum disorder. Number one, some people have slight dementia where they might not be able to tell you who the president is, but they can remember other things very vividly. And also dementia, depending on when you evaluate it, there's a thing called Sundowner Syndrome, so depending on when you evaluate somebody, they might be having a good day or a bad day. But generally, if Bellingham really feels that somebody is a risk to themselves, they will contact the Department of Aging if the family refuses to acknowledge. So I know that name, and I remember that individual. I don't know what basically.
I mean, if you talk, you can tell, I have a family member with dementia and Alzheimer, and, you know, he doesn't know just about who he is, he doesn't know where he's going, he doesn't know just about anything, so it's pretty obvious, I'm not a doctor, but it's pretty obvious that he's, you know, he's had some issues, and he really shouldn't.
I prefer that we take this offline and not talk about a personal situation in the public set, but I appreciate your comment, Ron.
And that's why we didn't mention any names, and I'm comfortable with that.
Yes, I'm a little concerned about personal information.
But I will go back and I will look at that incident, and we'll review it, and we'll reach out to Bellingham if we're seeing a trend.
So I appreciate it, but.
Is it a team approach?
Anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I have a question. Can you tell us what are the standards for, we go for the police participation in Department of Emergency Services training events?
Generally, if it is something that's applicable to us, we will participate in it. And the most recent table talk that they had on exercise, we had a sergeant representing the department.
There's somebody down at that.
Sergeant Lawson represented.
Okay.
Generally, if it's applicable to us, I mean, like specifically geared to law enforcement, DES will reach out to us and let us know that, you know, this is applicable to us, and we should have a representative there.
Now, would he report back to the force in general and do it? This is what I learned at the.
Yeah, we do a mini debriefing.
Okay.
Almost anybody who goes out and participates in that training will come back and say, you know, they brought this up, maybe we should think about our policy on this, or they brought this up, maybe we should, you know, evaluate that.
Do you train in exercises with them as well, like response exercises in the facility?
Generally, those, like actual exercises are geared towards the fire department, not towards police, because if we were to have a pipeline emergency, generally what happens is it'd be an incident, a unified command, and we would respond and take our orders. We would not be the incident commander. So they would say, okay, this is what we want you to do.
So once incident command is established, you become part of the team?
Yeah, or we would not be the incident commander.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thanks. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, and happy holidays to everybody. And happy twenty nineteen. I don't see a problem.
Probably be right back in here to give his report. John, you ready to do yours?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to report that as of November thirtieth, eleven months out of the year under our belt, we had a positive budget variance of three hundred and ten thousand dollars and change. Emergency services, public works, and admin are all under budget, while codes is slightly over budget, and parks and rec is now over budget because of Mary Delver. Real estate transfer tax still doing very well, property tax as well, you know, obviously interest is doing very well. Local services tax, looks like it might come in a little bit under budget. EIT continues to be a little bit of a laggard, and obviously, as we talked about, ad nauseam cable franchise fees are still not, are underperforming this year. The, you know, other funds, really nothing too out of the ordinary. I'm starting to feel very comfortable about how the sewer fund is going to finish the year. But at the general fund, I'm basically, I think we're in a coming running budget. It's going to be, it's going to be zero.
Okay, that's good.
So it's better than, better than the.
Better than forty-seven.
Yeah. That's all I have for now. Obviously, we have, you know, just a week and a half left in the year, a lot of closeout stuff, lots of transfers, lots of year-end calculations, but this is the fun part of the accounting wall. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions for John?
Yes, I have a couple.
Maybe up there? I think Mike had a question.
Yeah, a couple. These are more education, John. Page one of one of the summary of the Joe report.
Is that the projection, or is it just the?
Neither.
No, it's just the.
This is, it's under the first column of general fund.
Okay.
First one is under receipts, and the miscellaneous revenue category, it's a million four three, and I'll ask the duplicative, but relative to the expenditures, miscellaneous expenditures, that's nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Can you, miscellaneous, that's the, those are big numbers for miscellaneous revenues and expenditures, and I haven't looked at the detail, John, to know what was in there, but seemed unusually high quoted.
Yeah, and, yeah, it would be transfers from state liquid fuel, that would be a big chunk of it.
That'd be five or six hundred.
It would be transfers from.
Phew.
Just curious. No, that's a good question, because now that I say that, that doesn't explain even close to it. Now I'm curious, and I'm just spacing on something, but Mike, let me go back to offline about what that would be.
Yeah, just curious, you know, obviously, I think, John, you would categorize it otherwise if there was a box for it, so sometimes miscellaneous is a catchall, it's a value to, to.
Yeah, it'd be transfer from other funds, but it's still, let me get back to you, Mike, I'll talk more.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask a couple of questions on the next page, which is the October eighteen fund year-end projection. Any thoughts on, under administrative expenses, why the variance, it's fourteen point nine percent minus, lower?
Yeah, that's all due to the washback getting diverted.
Okay, oh, that's right, you mentioned that last month, and, or last meeting, I think, or recently. And then Parks and Rec, is it variance of ten point two over? Any particular on that one? You were projecting.
Yeah, that's Mary Delver.
Oh, that was on there, of course, of course. Okay, just, you know, just trying to learn a little bit, John.
But, Mike, I'm rarely stumped, and you, I'm stumped right now on the miscellaneous revenue, I don't, but it's going to come, it's going to, it's going to hit me like a, I'm going to apologize.
As my mentor, I, I, I would leave it to you.
Unfortunately, in John's defense, he knows, he really does know, it's just that normally we report everything on a core function basis, and that particular fund report's done on a line item basis, and there is a difference, it just means that the numbers are moved around in a different way, and one has more detail in it than the other, that's why John is, they're struggling to figure out what the right answer is for Mike. So he probably will have it figured out in the next ten minutes.
No, Spanish Inquisition, I'm just interested to know.
That's all right. Cormen, when Cormen's come back, and he's going to do the three, the three fire company reports, and I see there's no fire marshal report, other than a call today, but I'll report that later. Okay, the reports I'm going to give you is activity for November twenty eighteen only. For Goshen Fire Company, the fire response, this is the fire company end, is forty in East Ocean Township. The fire police, nineteen, and the EMS response for East Ocean only is two hundred and twenty-five. Malvern EMS, they had thirty-three calls for our basic life with a few transports, and twenty-nine were ALS, which is advanced life support, and out of those twenty-nine, they transported twenty-three. That's it, thank you. Just to make sure everybody understands this, we sometimes just don't report these and others do. We do, if there was something that was out of line with what this standard report tends to be, we would let everybody know that and spend some time on it. What this does mean is that there's a lot of activity with the fire companies and the EMT people, and it's worthwhile for everybody to understand that, particularly when it comes time for us to send over the money that we do and for people to have to use those services. So it's a big, it's a big deal. Mr. Chairman, I, I light bulb went off on that.
Oh, light bulb went off.
Yes, the reason, because I heard fire, and I was like, that's it. The reason those three, three eighty series was so high miscellaneous revenue, that's the pass-through revenue from the fire company for paying their salary.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
John's been redeemed, I must say.
Well, I knew he would, you know, because that's what we do, we jump on those things. As soon as one cent is out of line, we're, you know, we're not going to sleep until it's, thanks.
I usually hop around over here, and we have one of, I guess you're going to do, but since I'm almost there, we're going to do the minutes of the treasurer's report. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes of December eighteenth besides the one that John, John received from Janet?
No. Thank you, Jen, as always. I have no comment.
Anybody else? Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Comments or questions for the board, from the audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The treasurer's report, does anybody have any comments or questions on the treasurer's report? None? Michael Harmon?
Mr. Chairman, with no questions, I would make the motion that we graciously accept, sorry, graciously accept the receipts and pay the bills once we bid on them this evening.
Second.
All those in favor up here, anybody? Any comments out there? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Who, who, who seconded the minutes? Normally, Kristi K. is here to join us. Anything to do about ordinances, but tonight, we are blessed to Brian Jennings here as a substitute or as an overseer now, as a.
Not a substitute.
But we have two amendments to our zoning ordinance to consider, ordinance to modify the time limits applicable to the zoning hearing board decisions, and the second one is to repeal the drone ordinance because the state has approved the need of regulations for that. So I will turn the hearing over to Ryan, he can do both of them, one right after the other.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just again, by way of introduction, this evening, we will conduct two public hearings as part of the regularly advertised monthly public meeting. The first, as the chairman mentioned, to consider the adoption of, and if approved, to adopt a zoning ordinance amendment that would further amend the challenges of zoning ordinance. With that, I would like to open the record for this evening's first public hearing. The title and summary of the proposed ordinance amendment is as follows. An ordinance amending the East Ocean Township zoning ordinance of nineteen ninety-seven as amended at section two four zero dash five six and two four zero dash five eight to adopt provisions modifying and clarifying time limitations and expirations applicable to variances, appeals, and applications to the zoning hearing board and related permits. Just by way of background, the board and the audience, currently, the zoning ordinance section two forty fifty-six C provides just a six-month expiration of decisions of the zoning hearing board. Where necessary, zoning and building permits are not obtained, or conditions of approval are not fulfilled, those such approvals would then expire if essentially not acted on. After conferring with township staff, supervisors, and the solicitor's office, it's been determined that the ordinance provisions should better specify the conditions of approval expiration. So what this first ordinance amendment does, or proposed ordinance amendment, it provides an eighteen-month expiration period of decision of the zoning hearing board when there are necessary zoning and building permits that are not obtained. So essentially, it's expanding the window of time from six months to eighteen months. Additionally, the proposed amendment also carves out decisions and grants of approval which pertain to subdivision and/or land development applications. Oftentimes, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code governs those timeframes. So it's not entirely proper, where there could be some instances where there's confusing overlap between those approval timeframes. The M P C spells out a five-year period, the township ordinance as it exists spells out a six-month expiration period. So this proposed ordinance just clarifies that timing. With that introduction and background, I'd like to introduce five exhibits related to this amendment. The first, I'll mark as B one, proof of publication in the Daily Local News on December third, two thousand and eighteen. The second, B two, a letter dated December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from Kristin Kemp to the Chester County Law Library, providing the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for public inspection purposes. Exhibit B three, a letter also dated December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from Kristin Kemp, the Daily Local News, providing the proposed ordinance amendment for public inspection. Exhibit B four, a Chester County Planning Commission review letter dated October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And lastly, exhibit B five, a memorandum dated November eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from Township Zoning Office Mark Gordon to the Township Board of Supervisors. At this time, I'd ask if there are any comments or questions of the board?
Does the board have any comments or questions?
No.
Does the audience have any comments or questions? Does anybody like to make a motion of authorizing the two of the amendments for the zoning ordinance changes?
Sound a...
For seconds?
Second.
Comments or questions once again, for anybody? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. As I mentioned, there will be two public hearings. Moving on to the second, it is to consider the adoption and if approved to adopt an ordinance amendment which would, as the chairman indicated, repeal chapter one fifty-three of the Township Code titled model, or excuse me, model aircraft and amateur rockets, which is more commonly referred to as the township's drone ordinance. The title and summary of the proposed ordinance amendment is as follows. An ordinance of the Township of East Goshen, Chester County, Pennsylvania, repealing ordinance number one two nine dash B dash twenty fifteen, codified as chapter one fifty-three of the East Town, East Goshen Township Code, titled model aircraft and amateur rockets. By way of background for this proposed amendment, back in two thousand and fifteen, the board supervisors enacted legislation for the regulation of drones, otherwise referred to as amateur rockets, model aircraft, and unmanned aircraft. Sections one fifty-three one through one fifty-three three defined and regulated such objects, in addition to providing various penalties for violations of those regulations. However, more recently, in October of this year, the Governor of Pennsylvania signed into law Act seventy-eight, two thousand and eighteen, which will take effect next month, specifically on January tenth, two thousand and nineteen, which will preempt local regulations in that attempt to regulate the use of unmanned aircraft. In light of the state-based legislation and preemption, it's now necessary to repeal the township's existing chapter one fifty-three of the code. By way of hearing exhibits, I'd like to introduce and have moved into the record three exhibits, namely, B one, proof of publication in the Daily Local News on December seventh, two thousand and eighteen. B two, a letter dated December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from Kristin Kemp to the Chester County Law Library, providing the proposed amendment for public inspection. And lastly, exhibit B three, a letter dated December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, from Kristin Kemp to the Daily Local News. At this time, I'd ask if there are any comments or questions from anyone in the audience or on the board?
Any comments up here?
I do have a question. Since we are repealing our ordinance, when the state takes effect on their situation that we feel does not address an area or two to the, to the safe criteria that we would like in East Goshen Township, what would our method then be, because we would then be deviating from the state approval?
Right, so at that time, based on whatever that criteria or regulation might be, we would have to perform a preemption analysis to determine if that activity that you would subsequently be attempting to regulate would fall under that preemption umbrella, or if it's something that you could separately, separate and apart from the state legislation regulate. So it would really, it's a fact-specific determination. We would have to compare it to the state law versus what activity you're trying to subsequently regulate.
And if, if the state agreed that, that they did not, I'm trying to understand what you just said.
Sure.
If the state did not, if the state agreed that they did not deal with our particular issue, then we would have the right to make our own amendment?
Right, we could enact essentially new legislation through ordinance in the township code to regulate that activity. However, I believe it to be, and I haven't studied the entirety of this new state law, but I believe it to be the intent to regulate all drones and drone activity. So at that time, should instances arise, we would again have to perform an analysis and look to the state laws and determine whether it's preempted or whether it's not. If it's not, we connect in ordinance.
Will, will the time period that we were redacting ours and adopting, adapting this, adopting the state, is there anything that could fall through the cracks that someone could come in and say, well, I'm covered under grandfather clause because this and that happened, or...
There wouldn't necessarily be any sort of grandfather clause situation. It's quite possible that now and the state may affect, there could be some drone activity that's not otherwise permitted. However, that can probably be regulated through other township ordinances or through the crime code.
According to this, there shouldn't be a period in between the two...
So, so the board understands my rash that it may be a watered-down version that organizations may or may not have had an influence on, that may not be tolerable as one official in East Goshen.
Conduct surveillance of a person privately. I guess we'll all do that. Operate a matter which places another person in a reasonable fear of bodily injury and deliver, transported, uses to transport drugs into a prison. Our ordinance, which we adopted, we weren't so much, we were not concerned about the prison issue. People flying them safely, and the other concern was privacy. And so both of them are covered in the first two provisions of the state law.
Well, we also had a concern, if I remember correctly, alone in our open space, and we addressed that in our ordinance. It doesn't sound like the state has addressed any of that.
Right, just right now, we, we cannot regulate drone flies over your property.
Talking about open space, like our parks?
We can't regulate that. The state says that to regulate for surveillance, in other words, they cannot use them unless the police officer doing some kind of investigation. And they cannot operate a matter that places another person in reasonable fear. Those two provisions are what we're now...
I can tell, I can say for the record, I'm not happy with that. So time will portray what we have to do, but I don't, I feel that does an injustice to the work that staff did for our ordinance. And I think that's another avenue of the state trying to dictate to a township what we should be doing. And I don't like that because they're wrong, in my opinion.
Right. And to the extent situations arise or circumstances are fact-specific inquiries, we can, you know, again, analyze the state law under whatever those subsequent circumstances are. We can make a determination and a recommendation based on what the state law regulates and what it doesn't regulate. And if there are things that the state law as a general not regulate, we can certainly adopt new legislation to attempt to regulate those things.
Could I ask the board if they would object to staff putting that on an agenda item? Well, put it on an agenda, I don't care how they do it, but I, it should, it could be a staff agenda, or it could be our agenda. I think staff should, should look at some areas that we may not have the coverage that we may want.
The other factor in this is that these are regulated by the FCC, which now, you have to register your drone, you have to have, they all size, licensing requirements, permitting requirements, all those also impact on your drone operation.
Right, so those are federal regulations, and now there are state regulations, and it's basically wiping the ability of the municipality in most instances to have its own legislation. So again, what we're doing tonight would be repealing what we've already put in place, but we're not necessarily throwing it in the trash can. I mean, we have it, that work's been done, we can perform the analysis, and, you know, we can go about it.
I understand, and I would ask that, we're not done with this, but let's, I don't want to delay it any further.
I ask a scenario, a little, Ryan, maybe you can comment, or Rick. If, under this, these new state regulations, if as a citizen or a staff member observes someone, say they're operating a drone in our, in one of our parks, and we feel that they're doing something that is in violation of the, whether it's FDC, or FAA, or FAA, or this state ordinance, say they're flying it too high, they're doing something that could be threatening, who enforces that? Who do we contact? Our, our police, our state police, the, is there an agency of the state that, like a game commission that you contact? And where does that, where do we lead?
The local police would investigate the complaints against the state law. And yet they, jurisdiction over the altitude of flying the drones, or, and find the airport, all that stuff.
Who do you call?
The FAA, if it's a, if you think the drone is going to harm you under the bodily injury provision, you would contact the police. If you think the drone is flying over your property, looking in your windows, or surveillance, you would call the police. But if you see somebody flying a drone, it seems very high, that would be an FAA.
Above like, is it two hundred feet?
There is a height limit. And then again, if I'm not mistaken, because we're close to the airport, you're supposed to notify the airport. You're not flying a drone here. Here, you're supposed to have a license, or permit from the state. Hopefully, everybody got one, back, yeah.
Someone who's flying a drone in the park and say, do you have license?
Not unless the state has something in their, in their ordinance that says you must be licensed. You can't enforce something that's not...
I'm just curious.
I think the bottom line of this is interesting, because I know that in reading about it, the federal government, and I think the state government, was trying to come up with uniformity in terms of what's going on.
Kind of DC.
Now, having said that, what I'm also hearing, though, is that may or may not be preempted out, in other words, we can't, so if we got to that point, what I can, Ryan, is that we...
By any state or federal law, then yeah.
But what Corbin is asking me to do is to determine if there are any provisions in our ordinance that aren't contained in the other two, were preempted out, for most being able to do that correctly. That is, for me sure, that everybody's on a safe page here. So there's a little bit of work to do. We may or may not find anything out that we have to add, but we can add under certain circumstances, right?
There may be circumstances, right. If they're not otherwise regulated by state or federal law, then the municipality within its police powers would have that ability.
And we go through the same process if we have to.
The same exact process.
Okay, very good. Okay, so motion, let me make a motion. Let me make a motion.
Nobody's moving.
John's gonna make a motion, is that it?
I move that we adopt an ordinance of township of East Goshen, Chester County, Pennsylvania repealing ordinance number one twenty-nine dash B dash twenty fifteen, codified as chapter one fifty-three, the East Goshen Township Code.
Second. Comments from the board, from the audience? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan.
Sure, I need you to make more.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, too.
Yeah, oh, those Brian's are killers. Carlina's, oh my goodness, they're the best.
For those that are streaming, there's a little sidebar going on here about some of the things that Brian brought for us to eat, eat later. The next item when he adjourned is item eleven, there's only one matter underneath that, and that is the, consider amending, well, it's not amending. We had asked, we had had a recommendation put on the floor about the...
The proposed program would involve, essentially, under the property maintenance code, if you have a required test, maintain, and operate, or is with N F P A twenty-five, which is the regulations for that. So what we're suggesting is that the board basically adopt a program that we would notify, contact everybody in a disperity, annually, and as provided, confirmation, copy, inspection report, test report, what have you, that their system has been tested or inspected in accordance with N F P A twenty-five. For whatever reason, we have been doing it, we're suggesting that going forward, that the independent living units, which are essentially apartments, and then because you're signed up for the facility, you have to make your deals, that they be considered as living units, and that we conduct the re occupancy inspections of them on a, on a, every time they reoccupy. That will enable us to, hey, make sure that the units are, have the current GFIs, fire extinguishers, extinguishers, whatever else they have to have. And will also give us the opportunity to get in those buildings on a regular basis, so we make sure that the stair towers are kept clear, the exits are, or just basically letters, information, we would track what a command editor, you know, database, keep track of it. Inspection?
And Mark Miller, who was Public Works Director and Assistant Fire Marshal, have been trying to institute a program that would cover such inspections since the unfortunate demise in Westchester at the nursing home fire that they had. This is a great start for East Goshen, and it's a great start that we're able to do in-house, and getting into all these large sums of expense, and more heads on the body, until we work into a program. I believe this is a very critical and good start behind us. So I, for more discussion, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board direct township staff to begin implementation of the recommendations as outlined above.
Do you second?
I'd second that.
I got a question, Ricky. Under the recommendation that Corbin referred to, in the first line, there's a parenthesis with...
I've noticed, but frankly, that's what the reference is.
I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted somebody to tell me the label was in sure I was right.
I think that the motion is going, it's a real good start, I agree with Carmen's comments, and I think one of the values of this, in addition to the safety inspections and the reporting, will be some data collection, so we can begin to document and see if there's indications for a need for more or less refining, and so I'm, I'm on board with this. And I, Rick, I really appreciate you taking a review of this and coming up with something that's workable.
I got a question here, though. I appreciate the fact that they, they, and I have, is you and Corbin Booth has said, this is a good start. What is a good finish?
Well...
If I could, if, go ahead.
There may be indications that we want to do, or, or feel compelled to do more. Certainly, I was adamant about the initial proposal as being, I thought it was excessive before we had enough information, that such that we're already, we're building in a staff person, creating a legacy cost, and possibly impositions corporate office neighbors, that there may be an indication later on, with more data, that there's something in addition we can do. So that's why I say it's a good start. I'm not suggesting right off, right off the bat, that going ahead with this recommendation is immediately, we'll see how this operates. is immediately, we'll see how this operates from my standpoint for the next year or two, and see what kind of data we collect, see what the cooperation is, see what the feedback is from the community, whether it's pushback, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm basically agreeing with Mike, but when I say it's a good start, once we get a handle on the very large apartment areas that we're talking about, the nursing homes, whatever, we may find that there is a need to possibly go further, or we go to regular commercial buildings, or other buildings that may not have sprinklers, or we just stay where we are. I can't give you an answer on it. I do know it covers the concern that Mark and I and others have a problem with, and we see what happens from there.
Okay, it's 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 in effect, it's a trial, trial by fire.
Not a bad thing to say there.
But it's it's it may or may not require additional work in the future, and it may be okay the way it is, that's fine. I agree, and I want to thank Rick and his staff for taking what was proposed and bringing it down to what is proposed for us and has a motion to afford it, like, because it's a.
Second.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Do we have any, we're saying that we can do this, implement it with our existing staff, do we have any, so we're just gonna to re inspect the independent living units which have kitchens, and you know, in those facilities, they have step-down units that don't have kitchens, that are like regular rooms, so we're not going to be looking at those, but do you have any indication of the turnover on those units? Are they any greater or less than, say, an apartment building, or?
We don't have, we have very little data on the turnover of them. We stuck with the independent living units because clearly, based on what we know, they are more akin to apartments, where people can come and go, truly independent. Based on what I, personal experience with the independent living, with the assisted living units, they're more or less like, almost like a hotel room, they're somebody, people are in and out on a regular basis, I don't think you equate it to, and obviously, the skilled care is essentially almost a hospital.
I think there might be some discussion with each of the facilities about what would qualify for the type of occupancy that we're regulating.
We're limiting it to the independent living units.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious about the turnover, so I guess it would be a ongoing monitoring of how active that's going.
Will the inspector also, code enforcement person, also be looking at the situation with respect to the common areas, like main kitchens, storage areas, or whatever, fire?
It would be there by, you're walking by, walking down the stair tower, you notice that the exit light was out, you would be able to tell somebody that the exit light needed to be fixed, or if there was stuff piled in the stair tower, you would be able to tell, hey, this unit is fine, but oh, by the way, but I think they pour these gadgets into the building.
That's the.
Yeah, that is probably, and 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 again, A, it's almost the same analogy, when they go into an apartment building, you know, to do the union apartments, if something's, we're not, you know, there's something, the exit lights out, hey, they tell the maintenance guy, hey, the.
We're not going to overtly, if we see, we 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 tell them.
Right.
But we're not going to make a concerted effort to go through, well, all the common areas.
No, I'd not envision, we would, I'd not envision that we would go and inspect one unit, and somehow, we would then partly add ten-hour inspection through a whole facility. They would walk to the unit, look and see what's there in the unit, and all the common areas going toward that. But over the course of time, as you move, as, because again, they change over, you change over, over the course of a period of time, you will get through the whole building.
If I could be a little bit more of a fire company for a lot of given reasons, ten out of ten cases have alerted me to the fact that I've had the code department go in via email or conversation to check situations that I took a verbal look at while I was looking at the problem. So all this, fill some data, let us show them that we're sort of checking, and it sort of self-regulates when they find out that people are coming in, some of the midnight stuff may not happen.
And you know, over time, they may end up developing, we may develop, they've given us good tips, ultimately, it's beneficial to them for us to point out something for their license and their certification, so there is some cooperation to the benefit of both and all in building this a little bit, and establishing a presence at these places with some regularity.
Where I was going with this was correct, and what we're doing is now going to do the same thing in Wellington and Billingham.
The independent.
Anybody, if they see something, we report it, we, if we're building, if anything, thrusts us on that particular unit.
Correct.
Any other questions up here?
That's a good start.
Out there in the audience, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next is item twelve, new business, consider a recommendation for group business, there's big proposals received, there's some cases and some not, we didn't get a motion that we assign Riley and Sons the octane gas and diesel fuel for the price of twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
I'm going to do the whole thing.
Oh, great.
If you don't mind.
Oh, wonderful.
Soda ash without operators, a weekly cost of seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-five, monthly cost of forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, eighteen hundred dollars, twelve collections with seventeen, two thousand and eighty, so we award the bid by recommendation to A.J. Blazinsky Incorporated for the roadside litter collection.
Your second? I'll second.
Any questions from anybody? Just expect that last bid.
Well, the the roadside litter collection is, this is not the best word to use, but is is a novelty in municipal government, but is important to us, the way we look, the way we present ourselves, unfortunately, there is a portion of the population that doesn't and choose to throw their detritus out in an unthinking manner, and we are either left in a volunteer situation, service-oriented approaches, yes, in East Bradfordtown, we've had a roadside litter collection program in place with A.J. Blazinsky for some years now. It's very important to, I think, our landscape and our sense of place, so the cost here is, I know it, so that it's a service, I think, for a municipality like East Goshen that wants to present itself and represent itself as a premier community, that this is a cost, it's an unfortunate one, but like many things, when times has to step in and provide the service.
Rick, when the bid, when you talk about the one collection, twelve collections, when they do a collection, is it a specific period, or is it the whole?
Collection, the bid is for twelve collections. Bid is twelve collections, yes, they do the roads, or at least the element of.
In fact, this is a substitute for, keep, keep, keep it as you agree.
I don't think it's a substitute, I think I would use the word supplement.
It's a continuum.
A supplement, supplement is.
A supplement.
But I would, I would note that the planning commissioner last weekend picked up about twenty-five to thirty bags of trash on East Strasburg Road, that's our.
Was that near your house?
It did, and it looked very nice. That was our planning meeting, they do it twice a year, they've adopted East Strasburg Road.
Ryan was in the back, did you guys come here for a reason?
Yes, we came here to hear the new business from eight twenty-five to eight thirty.
Okay, wait till we get to, wait till we get to the continuation of that, which will be pretty shortly. Next item, anybody else have any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Item twelve B is the requested Delphi environmental impact statement, when the time comes, as they think it's January fourth, it's going to be January twelfth.
Let's next one you adjourn.
Rick has talked to the lawyer that helps us, he suggested.
The, there was a difference, well, the last meeting suggested that the board asked for to have Adelphia perform an environmental impact statement. FERC has already told Adelphia that they have to perform environmental assessment, and there are two separate terms, and it basically has to deal with whether or not it would affect the, well, yeah, affect the quality of the human environment, one of them, the idea being that the environmental assessment is for the, excuse me, environmental impact study, that was suggested that we should just resend the letter to FERC, that they would require Adelphia to do so. Spoke to this solicitor, she says, sending those types of letters won't do anything, but she recommended if you want FERC to do the impact statement, you need to get the environmental assessment, review it, define toothpaste, identify those areas in the assessment that would significantly affect the quality of the human environment, identify them, and then file a petition. Explicit? Unfortunately, both FERC and the data-driven, and just sending requests to do something doesn't really do anything. You need to have a petition, you need to have facts, add some documentation to support your position. So my understanding, the environmental assessment will be released January fourth or fifth, there's, I think, a ninety-day comment period, so once it comes out, we will, of course, they can review it, and we can identify what areas would impact the human environment, and then they would come back to the board recommendation, that, okay, this is what we found.
Given the thickness of bureaucracy at the upper levels, I think this is the most efficient way. I, I think, given the the thick, the thickness of bureaucracy at the upper levels, this is a much more efficient, this is an efficient way to proceed, burdens on us, we get the the assessment, human condition, the human, the environment here, which we probably feel that there is, then we make make a petition and see, see what goes with with FERC, and I think it's a smart way to go.
And we wouldn't just rely, I don't think, the pipeline task force will take this up, but we're in possession of a compendium of thirteen hundred documents on environmental issues around pipelines, fracking, and compression stations, and so on, so we can use the data from these peer-reviewed articles when making our appeal, if we decide to go forward with an impact statement request.
Yeah, that's good.
Now, that being said, if if you sign up for the FERC webpage, a number of people have written emails or letters to FERC asking for an environmental impact statement, so I mean, there's a lot of people that have done it, again, of course, solicitor doesn't think, they carry a lot, doesn't carry a lot of weight on that one.
The question I would ask is, well, first of all, the statement I'd make is, number one, there's a three-month period to get from the time that they issued this statement to, the other thing, too, and I don't know the answer to this, and I don't even know if we would like to do it this way, but there are some groups out there that are very much into the Adelphia pipeline, as well as the Sunoco pipeline, I don't know if those groups want to do it as a partnership, it would be some way of reducing our costs, they may in fact want to do that for pure reasons or other reasons, and if we don't get us to the same place, but we might be, in fact, as a FERC, we can do so, then I would suggest we consider that if it's still possible. So, I don't know, do we need a motion at this stage, or do we just need a request for me to?
No, no motion.
No motion.
All right, it's a second.
Any comments?
There was no motion.
No motion.
No motion.
It's no motion.
Excuse me, I want to.
But no, no, this isn't an action item.
No, I didn't think it was either, I thought you made a motion. You've got to wear yourself out, Bernie.
Yeah, it's easy to do. Bernie Greenberg, eight ninety-four, Jefferson Way, some of my comments are with conjunction with Linda Farrell. Adelphia is supposedly repurposing a pipeline, but this is not a simple repurposing. I'd like to go over a few of the facts, okay? Two new compressor stations, very large, one in Assembly, it's all new, five in Chester County, one here, nine horizontal directional drilling sites, says even some concern that some of this natural gas will be liquefied and sold on receipts, okay? We should do it now. The environmental assessment is very, is a very consistent document, and it has very, very little evidence, and it's been, it's used for the Health Resources Services Administration to decide whether there should be an environmental impact statement, if there will be any adverse effects. But the environmental impact statement is much more complete, robust, discusses environmental impacts, reasonable alternatives, mitigation measures, detailed discussion of environmental consequences, et cetera. I recommend that we take a proactive approach to this now, and ask for a environmental impact statement, request it. It can be done by an email, I did it, I, I recommend that we take this proactive approach. Linda Farrell has said that this is the best approach for the municipalities in Chester and Delaware County, and this is what I recommend, that we put skin in the game now, it is not a big deal to request it. I've given you some evidence already, we talked about air pollution, water pollution, et cetera, it's not hard to request an environmental impact statement from this board, so now to show upfront that we want an environmental impact statement.
Bernie, I appreciate what you said, and I appreciate your recommendation, but if you listen to Rick, we we have a lawyer that represents, he's saying to do it after you review, and specifically request the things that you want to have examined in the, in an interview, you're suggesting A.
Well, B.
It's not that we disagree with you, it's just a matter of how you go about it.
You know, I I get Bernie's comment here, I mean, we could do A, is Bernie said, well, we want to get skin in the game, but it's not a big deal. I agree with Rick, they're not going to pay too much attention to it, but if we want to send A, and just say, here's an email from the elected officials of this municipality, and we want to let you know, we're looking at, going to be reviewing the assessment, the environmental assessment carefully, we believe that there's cause, there likely will be cause to then have an environmental impact statement prepared, we want to let you know now that we think that there is going to be good cause for it, and therefore, if it would be a benefit, put our hat in the ring now. Bernie, the more effective one.
But if it's, there's no, there's no harm done.
No harm done, but it's, as long as it's not going to just spend the staff time, the simple email, that's fine, that's fine. I think A and B is fine.
My, my question would be, but then we formulate, when we have a chance to review it, now Margie says, this is what we should do, is it going to work against us by doing it?
Having dealt with federal comment periods, no. It's so impersonal, I mean, and there's, I don't think it would, you know, and you can always simply say, we've reviewed it, and at this point in time, we X, Y, Z, and we may not be asking for environmental impact statement after, after we review the assessment, who knows? But if as long as it's just an email, and that would make you feel good, or to give a wasteland, that makes it feel better, I mean, I can support that, but the key is going to be the more incising effort to really review this thing and.
Well, I mean, the truth to the matter, Mike, I think, I think this is what you're saying, if if what Bernie suggested isn't going to harm us, which we're going to still do what we're going to do anyway, if it's not going to be harmful to what we're doing, then there's no reason not to do it, because it's a few, Ricky's very efficient at doing emails.
Made my day.
You made your day, that easy, huh?
Yeah, not that easy.
Which my Coco was that easy.
All right. So, me three, what do we?
All right, you got to do your address.
Yeah, Black Spado, six eleven South Big Lane, I just, from the last meeting, had an opportunity to drive by that valve station, and I had spent some time with Representative Cametta early thereafter, I'm kind of a C guy, right, and wanted to see exactly where it was across from the Chinese restaurant. It sort of dawned on me after meeting with Representative Cametta, that we're also in the planning stages of a Paley pipe trail, it would seem to be kind of incredulous to put a trail near that valve, and at some point, they were talking about turning it, that into a blowdown station, so I'm sure everybody on the panel has probably thought So, I'm sure everybody on the panel has probably thought that through, but that was the first thing that, and because I guess, we all ride bikes and walk and gather and whatnot, it should be something.
We felt it already recognized.
I'm hoping he did, yes.
They did, wasn't the same group, too.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Marty, Marty.
Thank you. Name? On behalf of the residents of Whitechirney, homeowners association, I'd like to publicly thank the township for taking the diligence and pursuing this matter. That's it.
Thank you.
And we support you.
Yeah, we're doing it.
And are you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, are you on the, are you on the emergency association?
We're doing what we can. Probably we're successful.
Okay, that takes care of later the twelve D. If low reimbursement rates are causing an EMS emergency, that's emergency medical services, it would be interesting reading for anybody that would like to read it, to see what some of the problems we're running into with our ambulance and paramedic units, along with the calls increasing, but they now have a problem of lower reimbursements from different areas. So, I would suggest that people give this a read. Thank you.
And I have, I have a, I have any other matter.
Is anybody else standing there?
Yeah. In fact, if at the end of this year, I'll be stepping down as tax collector for personal reasons, I thank the board for its support of my ever's hat. But it's continued to be a valued, a proud, a pleasure.
And we say valued, yes, thanks.
Anybody else standing?
Eric, you have anything?
I hate to do this to you, Michael, but we promised everybody that the delays on this work with every ABC, and the first one is David. You've got two of them.
I have no reports, we haven't met since the last.
Michael, you have any?
Well, I've been delinquent, I haven't been at the last two meetings. I didn't even get to the mulching session at Clyer.
You're talking about the games?
Oh, no, no, we're talking about the, well, no, we're just, just being.
Service before, you got anything to say? You have nothing to say? Okay, Carmen, you've got your emails.
My emails are sent.
You have anything, Eddie, you have enough to, you know?
David was there.
Yes, I was at the Department of Emergency Services training tabletop session, again, regarding pipelines, and it was really well-attended. Rick Nolan did an excellent job of facilitating the meeting. The meeting was a little different this time, we did three groups. So, one group was healthcare, one group was school districts, one school was regulations around pipeline emergencies. And it was really well-done. And, but it's really interesting to me that the start of emergency services is the nine-one-one call, and then everything starts to happen. What's missing, and we spent a little bit of time talking about this, is the communication of the residents and the training of the residents. Emergency Services knows what to do. We've given it, they're gonna have a chaotic situation if there's a rupture in ignition, but they know what to do, they practiced it, and they have a protocol, and that's gonna add to the chaos. So, we talked a little bit about that and the need for that, and the pipeline task force, so on Thursday, we'll have that on their agenda as far as, you know, how can we, as a township, help emergency services preempt some of the chaos by training our residents in an appropriate response if there's an emergency? So, that's, that's my report.
Were you not at the planning commission that Janet wasn't at?
I was at the planning commission, yeah, so I'm sorry.
David substituted for me then.
Yeah, and there was a lot of discussion, and it was a long meeting.
What I got from Mark is they believe that the ordinance, the TND ordinance will do what it was intended to do. That was, they basically take a step back and see if it's gonna accomplish the goal, and so they are in the process of finalizing the TND ordinance.
Meaning it overlay.
What is called overlay or not. But they believe that what they proposed, concept, they will accomplish the goal, and now we're going to, we'll pen the paper and then watch.
Yeah, not, not just the ordinance. What they decided was, and you'll notice that the next meeting, they have a working session that starts at five o'clock and a meeting that starts at seven. The working session was to do some imagination about what the pally pipe corridor redevelopment would look like, and then run that up against current zoning and the TND to find out what limitations or development could take place under the TND versus the traditional zoning. So, they're, they want to do basically a tabletop of, this is what it might look like, then let's run it up against both of the options and see if we have enough incentives under TND to have developers do that actually.
That's a good exercise.
Including economic modeling, where, you know, do we have to go higher to get enough living units to pay the developer to come in and invest in the, in the structure? So, that was, there was a long meeting, but that was the most significant outcome of the meeting was the idea of modeling.
Okay, that sounds good.
Very good, thank you. I can tell you, the meeting leaves you for the futures committee canceled their, canceled their meeting for this month of the meeting, January fourth, only because they knew you weren't available. So, that, we'll keep moving on. There's, there's a, Carmen's one.
We did get a letter from, that DPD has approved, or it's supposed to be, Sunoco was now permitted to resume drilling between Bellingham and Malat Forest and Botry. That was one of those areas where they had to do a reevaluation.
Well, we don't know when.
No, but it's, definitely DPD has signed off on the proposed plan.
Right on my backyard, thanks.
Anybody else?
No.
Sir? Is there a motion for a term?
I'll make a motion.
I would like to say, for those still streaming from the board supervisors, for me personally.